Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this city council meeting to order. Today is September 15th and our core value of the month is respect. All right, with that, we've called it to order, the invocation by Pastor Steve Ferris, First Baptist Church of Destin. Thank you for always being here for us.
Lord, we just come before you acknowledging you as Almighty God and King of kings and Lord of lords. And Lord, the world desperately needs you right now. Lord, it's been a hard week in this nation, the assassination of one man. And Lord, then I think about how the influence he had on this younger generation and then what happened in Nepal this week, that every government building was burned by the same generation. Lord, it's a mixed up world and we need your guidance. We need your direction. So, Lord, we just pray that you'll keep your protection on this nation, especially on our schools, guide our young people, Lord, and I thank you for these who are setting examples for all of them. And Lord, we just pray that you give them guidance. We just pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Abert with the pledge.
Please storm you with your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know. All right. All right, thank you for that. With that, I'll seek a motion for the approval of the agenda unless we have any substitutions or movements.
I move to approve as is.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Guile. Any discussions? Seeing none, Ray, open the vote. Not for the, that's just for us. We're about to get the public comments. Yes, ma'am. She's logging in. Oh, it's okay.
You want a verbal?
Give me two seconds. There we go. All right, I just have it so moved. We have our agenda and with that, we have our public comments. So if anyone here from the public wishes to speak, this is your time to do so. You guys, so come up here to the podium?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, all I need is your name and your address.
Carolyn E. Boss. I have a condo at Sun Destin.
Okay, and the address?
1050 Highway.
All right.
I think it is. I don't live there.
Okay.
Anyway, how can y'all pass the thing in March? My husband sent a letter refusing to pay, I mean disagreeing with you all, and he sent the letter in disagreement. And we never, nobody voted on it and it was passed back in March, I see from this card, which everybody, we just got our card yesterday. My daughter got her card today. That's no notification of this meeting to come tell you all anything. Why? We didn't get it before now and we protested. It wasn't voted on. We didn't get a chance to vote on it. It just passed. Is that the way it's supposed to be done?
Kim, can you?
I don't know. If you're referring to the short-term rental registration fee for condos, you all passed it after multiple public hearings for the ordinance and a resolution, which were advertised in accordance with state law.
Here in Florida?
Yes, ma'am.
We live in Mississippi. They don't send out to the owners. We sure got the owner for the card saying we're going to have to pay money. We got that fine, but we didn't get a notification of that.
So?
We didn't get to vote on it.
Correct. We voted on it as a council up here.
I guess that's the way it goes today.
Yeah, you're not a citizen, so you wouldn't have a vote.
Okay. Anyone else? Public comments? Yep. I'll let you go. Yep, yes, ma'am. All right, the lights are already on, so just name and address.
Sheridan Gibson, 724 Harbor Boulevard. So I just came before the commission tonight to find out who I speak to regarding the budgets for the city of Destin. You know, growing up here, I've just seen a deterioration of the beautification of Destin and it's quite shocking. You know, I walk my dogs along the harbor every day and it's just atrocious, right? The state of this city. And so I don't know if it's the county commissioners I need to speak to in addition to the city council members, if it's the state legislature, but I feel like, you know, there's a lot of tourists that come through our city that we should be allocating a little bit more money for the beautification of Destin. It is the gateway to the Emerald Coast and it's just heartbreaking to see. So I'd like to reach out to all of you to pay attention to our city because it's heartbreaking to me. So that's all. So I'd like to find out who to talk to.
Yes, ma'am. The easiest one and for anyone listening, council@cityofdestin.com. That'll get, that'll shoot your email to every single one of us up here on the dais.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, everyone. Yeah, the way of over. Yeah, thank you for being here.
Just so you know, we do have a meeting. We did request TDC to be here, correct? So we could talk about certain things with TDC potentially, who they're focusing on for tourists and funding and things of that nature. Back in March, didn't we ask to have a TDC representative here?
We did.
Are they ever scheduled to show up?
Not that I'm aware of.
Neither we're aware of. Do we have a TDC rep that knows anything about?
Yeah, it's me that you're looking at over here. I don't recall you asking the TDC to be here on September 15th, 2025. I apologize if that was specifically asked. I don't recall that.
No, we said back in March, we'd like to see them here and it's still September 15th, 2025. They're still not here.
Gotcha. All right, well, I'll follow up specifically on that.
I appreciate it. Councilman Schmidt.
Right, Councilman Bagby?
Yeah, and I would, Sherri, I would just say, we have, in February, we start our budgeting process. And so there's two ways, there's three ways. You can email us all. You can come to the strategic planning session where we start throwing out ideas and saying, we'd like to do this this year, we'd like to do that this year, or we don't have enough money, maybe we can do that in three years. And then the third way is you can get involved in a committee. So if you live down on the harbor or whatever, we have a harbor. Okay, because then you get direct input and they have a work plan and then they make budget recommendations to us. So absent knowing exactly what you're most upset about, it's hard for me to say where to spend the money, where we're spending money.
Hold up, hold up, hold up. For the sake of it, yeah, for the sake of, can you get cards with you, but just to keep this rolling before we break protocol? Yeah, but thank you for the PSA on all three ways. That's a great, yes, sir.
Is there an opening on the harbor committee?
Not at this time.
All right. And then, ma'am?
They can't attend any of the meetings and participate.
Yes, yep. We can get you a whole list of events and when that's happening. Just push that gray button, the light will turn on. Name and address and the floor is yours.
Yes, Yvette Rodriguez, 100 Gulf Shore Drive, East Pass Towers. First, I'd like to piggyback on what she said, just to keep it in line. Gulf Shore Drive is a mess as well. My husband and I walk the dogs and we pick up trash. We pick up diapers. We pick up poop. We pick up just fish. I mean, we pick up everything. It's, we don't see anybody out there ever picking up trash. And you know, the parking that's along there that people pay for, they just drop trash all day long. And we don't ever see, the trash cans are overflowing most times. And so just to make a note of that. Again, my husband calls the city every week. He complains, but we don't know what to do, you know, who to speak with about that. Because we just haven't seen any results from it, you know? I'll gladly go pick up trash if I'm walking, but it's just like, I know someone's paid, my tax dollars are paying for someone to pick up trash. So anyway, that's one thing. The second thing is back to what my mom had just mentioned earlier about the ordinance, 2423 CC. Prior to March 3rd, we were not notified. We had no notification. We live on Gulf Shore Drive. I did not get anything until today. This is it. This is all I've ever seen. So we were not notified and that's taxation without representation. I don't see how that can be passed just by the board. And then we owe more money. So we as condo owners, I rent in another location. I live in my location where I live, but we pay so much money already. And I don't find that taxing us again, we already pay taxes. I don't understand how taxing us again is going to help anything. I mean, this is just, we've already paid numerous, you know, about all the condo stuff going on. But we're just really upset about it. And I just don't understand. People just think just because you have a condo here, you have money, you know? Yeah, we have money, but I mean, we work really hard for it. So I just think that it's very unfair and I think it was done in a sly way. And I just don't feel like we were notified properly. Because we live here and again, this is the only piece of mail I've ever gotten about any of this. The first I'm hearing about it today. We read the paper, we look at Facebook or whatever, but again, we didn't know about it. And my husband is way on top of things. He's called you, Bobby. He's Facebook messaged you. He knows you. But anyway, also, one other thing I'd like to mention is Noriega. What is going on with Noriega? Are we going to get any information tonight about Noriega and what's happening there? Because they shut it down and we would like to use it and we live right there and now it's shut down since Labor Day weekend. And so I just wanted some information on that. Are they going to discuss that tonight or?
Yeah, we can if we get into it. We can bring this up. Yep. So thank you guys for being here and I just want to say thank you for bringing all this up. We appreciate it. Oh, Larry?
Mr. Mayor, just to point a reference, the cards that both of these young ladies have mentioned was a courtesy that we sent out to the condo owners that we could identify based on the database we had that the ordinance had passed and that fee was due, I think it was August 20, whenever it was, but that we will begin collecting in October and we prorated for the remainder of this year prior to the full fee being due next year. So the card they are referencing was a courtesy notice to let all those that we could identify and we're looking for more information to get, make sure we get a full database of those condos to let them know that the ordinance had passed, that fee was in place and moving forward, it would be expected to be paid by.
All right, thank you for that. Yes, sir.
Thank you for listening to my comments. My name is Steve Knupier and I live at 126 Country Club Drive West here in Destin. I've lived here for several years and I've become more involved in coming to the meetings and trying to keep up with what's going on after some things really started affecting me personally that I needed to come down here. But I wish more Americans would get involved with their government. My dad was a prisoner of war and he was tortured for our rights and our freedoms. So I understand how expensive it is to have the government that we have. It's not just money expensive, but people, veterans and different people just sacrifice a lot for us and we as Americans need to start being more involved in our government. But I'm here tonight because I don't want to offend anybody, but I just want to tell you how disappointed, ultimately disappointed I was in one of the meetings that I watched on the YouTube video regarding whenever our attorney, our city attorney who we pay and the rest of the council voted for some, some type of, I don't know if it was a resolution, but it was regarding Facebook and this modern way of communicating. And I was just ultimately disappointed in how it was, the responses that were made after the city council made a motion and it was seconded and it was voted on. And then it was just, it was just heartbreaking and just, I don't know what the word is for it, but whenever somebody asks what is the repercussions if I violate this after our city council has passed it, it's just, you talk about that this is supposed to be about respect this month? That is disrespecting our council to ask what is the repercussions? What is the punishment? You know, it needs to be severe. And it needs, there needs to be a resolution or a law or whatever it takes. If we're going to pass the resolution, there needs to be some backbone there to back it up. And if they want to try it, let them try it. And let there be some consequences to violating it. If you're going to pass it, if you're not going to pass it, everybody do what you want to do. But when our city council passes something and they all vote on it, every one of you has a vote. And if the majority of you voted in to be, then those that don't get their way shouldn't cry about it and say, hey, what's going to happen to me if I violate it? That's what I got to say.
All right, thank you for being here. Anyone else? Awesome. All right, I'm going to close public comments at this time and we'll go into consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
In a second?
Second.
With a second, any discussions? All right, seeing none. Ray, if you can open the vote. All right, I just have it so moved. I was going to ask you. Uh-oh, Jim voted twice. All right, 4A, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, first item is regarding 908 Airport Road. That is a city-owned building that is currently occupied by Food for Thought Outreach, Inc., a nonprofit food in-source for children in Oaklus County. That lease was a five-year lease that was entered in March of 2020 and it expired in March of 2025. There was an option for them to renew for an additional five years. That time came and went and they did not notify us that they wished to exercise that option. However, since then, we have had conversation with Ms. Tiffany Nelson, their executive director, who is here tonight and has a brief presentation to make to you, that it is their request that we would either extend that lease or to renew the lease under the present terms. But I'll yield to Ms. Nelson at this time, Mr. Mayor, if you would.
All right, same thing. Just hit that gray button. It'll turn the light red. Name and address. The floor is yours.
Sure. My name is Tiffany Nelson. I don't live in Destin, but I can give you my address.
Yep.
I live at 113 Secret Street in Hammock Bay in Freeport. But I first wanted to formally introduce myself. I'm Tiffany Nelson. I'm the founder and CEO of Food for Thought Outreach. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to present to you not only how our organization impacts the community, but how specifically the location at Airport Road makes a difference in our capacity to serve. And I do know many of you have been there and know the service that we provide. But for those of you that don't, in 2010, I started Food for Thought when my oldest son, who is now in college, was starting kindergarten. And I first became aware that there was a food insecurity issue in our community. At that time, I was a single mother, but I was determined to help. I received a $300 gift from my pastor and my children and I started serving six kids. If you fast forward 15 years to where we are now, Food for Thought serves over 3,600 children across two counties. We provide year-round services to 36 school locations. We are serving children from kindergarten up through high school. And we do that as a local organization that's funded by our community and we see over 100 volunteer hours a week from our community members who help us provide these services. In the years before we moved into the Airport Road location, I can remember moving, packing up our food and supplies into my then Kia Sorento and moving from one borrowed location to the another, to the another, to the another. And one day I met that current city manager and he introduced us to the Airport Road location, which many of you will remember, was not in the state that it is today and was intended for something much different than it is today. But we did not have roots in the community and it impacted our ability to serve and to grow. Since then, since I met the city council and the city manager and we were able to see the Airport Road location, we worked with the city, we worked with the Destin Rotary and the late John Kazak, who was so important to what we did and we did honor him in a golf tournament a year and a half ago after his passing. They renovated that location and it changed our capacity to serve the community forever. We have nearly doubled our capacity and our reach in the community since then. And our five-year lease was renewed in March of 2020, which I'm sure we can all remember what happened about two weeks after we renewed that lease. Our community was deeply impacted by COVID and our team and volunteers were out in the street of Airport Road, week after week, serving our community in the street all through COVID. Our volunteers and our staff members and our donors have come to know us in that location. They come and they pack the bags. They pick up the bags to distribute to the students that attend schools all across the county, in which there is a map in the folder that I put together of all the locations that we serve. Losing this location would devastate our ability to serve this community. Although I do understand that there was a miss, that I sent a letter as soon as it was brought to my attention, that we did miss that mark. But it has been our long-held intention to stay in that facility to the end of that 10-year term. In fact, if you were to look at our last board member or board meeting, we were talking about how we would honor the 10-year anniversary of our time in the Destin location this spring. In an average year, over $400,000 worth of food goes in and out of those doors. Our organization raises money to purchase that food to distribute to the children that we serve. Again, we see over 100 volunteer hours in a week. And in that packet that I put together, you can see a list of some of those volunteer groups that work with us and some of the community businesses and organizations that support us every week of what we do. We are one organization that serves two counties. It is true that our team moves in between the two locations on a regular basis, between our warehouse in Santa Rosa Beach and our airport facility here. In order to save money, we move things between the two locations to make it work. And we are often at schools providing our services. It is also true that when we started in Airport Road, we did have a garden as part of our initiatives that we no longer have as part of our initiative. It's not in our capacity to provide that service anymore. The lawn care is donated in kind. Our staff of seven employees is definitely not hired with lawn care skills. We do the best that we can and we work with our volunteers. But a few months ago, we received a generous donation of in-kind services twice a month from Lawnscapes to help us maintain the grounds of the facility. What I would like to ask is not for me. On behalf of the children that we serve, I would respectfully ask that we are able to continue the lease for the additional five years that we have and the same terms that we have so that we can continue to deliver on our promise to the over 1,700 children who are enrolled in our services in Oaklusa County so that they can have consistent access to food that they have grown reliant upon over the past 15 years. And I look forward very much to celebrating 10 years in that location and this year is, in fact, our 15th anniversary as an organization. Thank you for the time.
All right, thank you for that presentation. I'm going to ask for my motion because I see them up there and then we'll get into discussion. Sandy?
Yes, I'll make the motion that we extend the lease through March 1st, 2030 for Food for Thought under the same terms and conditions.
I'll second that.
All right, and with that motion and second, I have Councilman Guile up first for discussion.
Hi Tiffany, how are you?
I'm doing well.
We spoke on the phone today, but this is our first face-to-face. I did visit the facility today, twice actually. Second time, I learned quite a bit. It's very, very busy, busy organization. They service, they have a board up there that identifies how many kids they actually serve. There's hundreds between the two counties. I think it's a great service and I'm going to support this. Thank you very much, Tiffany.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that, Guile. Next, Councilman Braden.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for what you do. A huge supporter of it. I wish I could, I'd pay for all the food if I could for the kids. I was not aware that there was a hub for the entire county or two counties. Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I guess what I'm thinking is, you know, Destin gets a bad rap a lot around town. And I don't know what kind of recognition we get for supporting a facility for a dollar a year for two counties. Don't know that we need it, to be honest with you, but.
We give you recognition any chance that we can. And if you visit the facility, it's, you know, we have installations of photos and pictures and I certainly talk about it and our funding any chance that we can about how important this is and the generosity that you have given us. So
Awesome. Thank you so much.
It is not unknown in the world of our organization what you do for us.
Okay. Thank you so much for that. And as long as I have breath in my lungs, I'll continue to fight for you and provide that facility to do just what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Schmidt.
Hey Tiffany.
Hi.
Thanks for being here. I've always loved having a chance to visit over there and I know I've met you a few times. I love everything y'all do, always have. Whenever there was some research being done about some leases and it kind of came across my mind that this one was missed. It was very important that I called Larry and we made sure to get it back up here so we could have no problems in delaying it. So thank you all so much for what you do for all the kids all over the place.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Abert.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks. I never personally met you, but I have packed the bags. About three, four years ago, I did it for several months, at least once or twice on a Wednesday.
I think I have some pictures of you.
Yes. And I think it's fantastic just to know that we have such an impact on these kids, that they go home with food in their backpack through the weekend. It's an absolute no-brainer. Doesn't matter if anyone else knows what we're doing, the kids are going home with food. And it's not about the recognition, it's about keeping these kids fed on the weekends when there's not enough food for them at home. So thank you for what you're doing. Continue to do that. And I plan to do some more backpacking with you guys here in the next few weeks.
We have lots of openings.
Yes, I know you do.
My only two cents is going to be to backpack or jump on her back here and say, I think my favorite part is that it's discreet with the backpacks. I think that's just a cherry on top. You know, the food's essential, the logistics that you as adults provide to make this network happen. But the fact that you guys bring it all the way down to the child and making sure that they're not isolated or seen as something less, I think that was just something that really touched me. So I appreciate not only what you logistically deliver, but how you guys do it with love and how you guys really make it empathetic with them as well. So just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Yeah. All right, so I got all up. I'm not able to clear at the moment. So we will call the vote. Ray, if you could clear and call it. All right, I just have it 7-0, so moved. You're in it for five more years. All right, Mr. Larry Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item is item 4B. Just for information, this is regarding the e-bike ordinance that we had discussed earlier with anticipation of bringing back a draft ordinance at tonight's meeting. But I believe since then, we had conversation that the Oaklusa County Health Improvement Partnership is holding a meeting on the 1st of October. And the topic will be e-bikes. We're anticipating that there will be some action from the county, perhaps drafting a ordinance that we could model. We will certainly have representation at that meeting and bring you back through the Public Works Public Safety Committee a recommendation at a later date. But we wanted to make sure that we gathered the information that was provided there. And if there's some dynamics between what the county's doing and what the city's doing, make sure we take advantage of that before we get ahead of them. So nothing need to do other than know we'll bring you back at appropriate time.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Braden.
Thank you, Mayor. Larry, what can you anticipate the county can do that we can't do as a city? Larry, what can you anticipate the county can do that we can't do as a city?
I don't know that we anticipate, they could do a lot more that we can't, but I think we wanted, if they're, if they're going to do an ordinance, that we may want to model it so that we have one comprehensive ordinance in the city and the county, so that, you know, if law enforcement sees one coming down Commons, he's going to enforce the same law as he, you know, rolls through the city. So...
Okay. Thank you. I understand that. Because it's been my understanding that really we've got to get something come down from state level to really start some serious enforcement on this. So it's good that county's doing it and we can piggyback off that, maybe get something done before too many people get killed on those things. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. That's all on the board, so continue on.
Next item is 4C. Again, just for information, at the last meeting, we had a brief conversation in the meeting regarding the code of ethics and it was asked that we reach out to the city of Jacksonville Beach regarding their code of ethics for elected officials. We did get that document sometime late last week, mid-last week. We provided it to each of you as reference. Ms. Cop and I are reviewing that and comparing it to our city charter and some of the other resolutions that we've passed and working to customize that document and bring you back at a later date for your consideration.
All right. With that, any discussion? All right. Seeing none.
Next item is regarding 446 Calhoun. This is the property that's adjacent to the Dalton Threaville Park that council gave staff direction to get an appraisal on and enter negotiation with the property owner. We have done that. The appraisals end, their asking price was below the appraised value. We offered a lower price than what they had originally put on the table and their, according to them, their best and final offer was a $400,000 asking price. We had, they had began a little over 400 and we offered less than 400 and so that's where we are today. Along with that, we've asked our engineer to do some work to take a look at what it would take to bring that parcel up to a parking facility. And that would be somewhere between $500,000 and $600,000, depending on the timing and exactly the dynamics of it, but that would be a paved lot. So we could certainly save some money if we did something different than a paved lot, but in any event, if we move forward, that parcel will need to be rezoned from a residential to whatever would accommodate the recreational component as well. So that's where we stand on that. So any direction council would like us to move forward, we can, or we can, Ms. Cop, if you have anything to offer, we might, if we're prepared to bring back a contract, we could do that.
All right. Thank you, Larry. Councilman Schmidt?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to direct city manager and city attorney to execute a floor-to-bar contract for the price of $400,000 on 446 Calhoun.
Right. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
All right. I got a second. And then my first up for discussion is Councilman Destin.
Thank you, Mayor. And the agenda packet is not coming up on my iPad here, so I'll ask questions that may well be in it. How many spaces do we think we will get if we go with the fully paved parking lot plan?
70-ish, depending on exactly what has happened with stormwater. But that's from our engineer, he's done an evaluation of it. We think we can get somewhere on 70 plus or minus a few.
And how many parking spaces do we have at that facility now? So that's a substantial increase, isn't it?
Yes, sir. I don't know exactly how many, but I doubt they're 70. So I think that would be a substantial increase.
Now, I understand Mr. Schmidt's motion is just to buy the property this time. My question is, where in the budget will that money be coming from?
I would suppose it would come out of the parking fund, because there's about $2 million of revenue in that fund.
Ms. Cop, that would work?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then we'll have to come up with the $500,000 to improve it. So where would that come from?
I'm not so sure it couldn't come from the same fund. There's substantial funds in there that would cover it, unless there's some boundaries around it that I'm not aware of that would preclude that from happening.
Okay.
All right. For some reason, the board cleared, so I have Councilman Braden up first.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to have a little hard time supporting it this tonight and I'm going to tell you why. I'm not totally against it, but I went and looked at that piece of property, drove over there. And it's a pretty good incline driving up to that house. So I don't know how the stormwater is going to, how we're going to deal with that or how much that's going to take away from the property. We can't do a gravel lot a cheaper way because the way that, the slope of that land is just going to run off and create potholes and ditches and whatnot, in my opinion. I don't know how we're going to get across or that water. I guess build a bridge of some sort, a walking bridge where the stormwater goes underneath Calhoun there. I just hate to buy a piece of property, pay $400,000 for a piece of property, not knowing what it's going to take exactly to finish it and where the money's going to come from. The house right next door to it, I don't know what they're going to do. Would we like that thing? I mean, I'd be pretty aggravated if it's a whole lit parking lot, I mean, it's right next door. The other option was, and I don't know if it is an option, just north of the ball field where that, I guess, I don't know what the street is called, Kevin, you may know.
Hickory.
Hickory, just north of Hickory, along Calhoun. There's a pretty good chunk of land there that's, I guess, is right-of-way easement or something that I guess the city has. I know there's stormwater coming through there, but that could be piped and backfilled and probably a lot cheaper park. Don't know if we'll get 70 parking places, but it looked like there was quite a bit of property there, grassed area that we take care of that's not being used on that same side. So I'd kind of like to explore that option, but I just hate to spend, you know, buy that piece of property with a whole, with a whole lot of unknowns at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Great point. With that, city engineer, can you explain kind of what you guys calculated out there, that rough number of parking spots and your eyes on that?
So, yeah, we, so that $500,000 to $600,000, depending on, does include drainage work and that's where a big chunk of the money that has to go into this parking lot is going to, is to the drainage work. If we do a gravel lot instead of a paved lot, you know, that will save some money. And I don't have my estimate in front of me, so I don't know exactly how much that was. We can look at the right-of-way along Calhoun and Hickory to see what kind of spots we can place along that section of road. There is some, there is some wetland area in that, on that piece of property, so we would have to work around that. So there you go. If you have any other questions?
Appreciate that. All right. Councilman Gail.
Yeah, I do have some questions about that because during the council meeting, we made that motion. I believe we made the motion additional, an add-on motion that we had a value attached to that property north of Hickory, the one that we're discussing right now today. And from what I'm hearing, we don't have a value that would cost to, to improve that or whether or not it would or would not meet the parking requirements. Is that correct?
I think that is correct, yes. I don't think we have that prepared.
Okay. So we don't have that prepared. Second, what I'd like to bring up, I'm not sure that I'm going to support this for a couple of reasons, but I would like to bring up something that the city can take into account. Right now, the city doesn't allow pervious concrete and it requires larger retention areas due to percolation requirements. If you did allow, for this instance, pervious concrete in the parking spaces, not the drive spaces, because pervious concrete will unravel where cars have to turn their wheels, but in the parking spaces alone, several cities and municipalities allow that. And it allows that percolation rate, which requires a lot less, a lot smaller retention, which wouldn't increase the size of the parking spaces. But that's just something to look at if we, as council, wanted to overturn the pervious mandate. I'm still more of in support of that, north of finding out, not doing anything till we find out what's north of Hickory, because that was part of the motion and since we are not prepared today, I won't, I won't support the property until I have all the answers.
All right. And I appreciate the perspective of the pervious payovers. I think that's a huge thing that we should look at, whether it's at Land Development Code or not. Councilwoman Abear?
I am in the same boat, feeling like we're going to spend $400,000 to buy it and then maybe $500,000 to get it ready to use. So I'd like to see if we could pursue looking at that other area and see if something that we already own, we could turn into a parking lot, just for future thoughts.
All right. Councilman Bagby?
Yeah, I'm probably closer to where Tori and Teresa are. The, what percentage of that lot is wetlands?
I'm not really sure off the top of my head.
So I'm just going to be honest with y'all.
Which lot?
The one that you made the motion on.
Oh, that, that one, there is no wetlands on that, that particular, on 446 Calhoun.
So you're telling me that drainage ditch isn't considered wetlands?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm not sure I'm going to buy that, but okay. Because I know the people that rented that house three years ago, when did I rent, three years, four years ago, and they had a flooding problem on that lot, but they still wanted to buy it because it wasn't draining under the street. But that's beside the point. I guess my thing is, I want to see the appraisals, I want to see the engineering report on that lot. I want to see, you say $500,000, majority of that is site work. So how much are you telling me it's costing per parking spot? Because I know what a flat surface parking spot costs per parking place and I don't see how you get to $600,000 if you're telling me the majority, which I would assume is over $300,000, is being done on site work. There are just too many questions. How much did you assign to a parking spot, per parking spot paved?
Well, I didn't calculate it like that. I calculated it by what was needed to create the parking lot.
And I think, and I agree, we need parking there and I'll support parking there or on Hickory or wherever we figure out, but, but this is way premature. Have we applied for any grant funding to assist in this? Have we reached out to, I mean, I've got like 80 questions and no answers. You know, have we reached out to Little League to see, will they help or is their help just on the turf of the field? Too many questions, not enough answers. So I would ask us, you know, I'm debating on making a substitute motion on directing the city staff to reach out about a grant because, you know, a million dollars, I, is it legal? Yeah. If the attorney told us it's legal, it's probably legal. Is it the right thing to do? We have talked about parking in this town for at least 26 years that I've lived here and we're going to pull over half our parking fund or about half of our parking fund for a parking lot that's going to serve us a very small group of people for a very small time period during the year. And that parking fund was designed, the intent was the parking down in the town center, the parking down in the harbor and to help us on where we actually have parking needs year-round by our citizens, our businesses and our visitors. So I just think, I agree, it's a great idea, but we got to do some homework here and we've got to kind of figure out exactly what it's going to cost us and where that money's going to come from. Because I, as much as I want parking there, I will not support a million dollars out of our parking fund for just parking there. I'm sorry.
Councilman Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few comments and maybe some responses to clear up some possible confusion. I believe I heard from staff that they have a lot of the answers about what it's going to take to possibly do a parking lot there. Engineer, senior engineer, what's Robert?
City engineer.
City engineer.
City engineer. Okay. You provided that analysis for us, right?
Well, I've done an estimate.
Right. Okay. The money is going to come from the parking fund, so the question about where the money's going to come from, I think city attorney, everybody answered that. We could do a lot of things with the parking fund. I do agree, to this date, besides the cameras, nobody's brought anything to do with the parking fund. Cameras is, I think, maybe the first thing that we've possibly talked about using parking fund to do. So where the money's going to come from, I think that question's been answered. The area that is the right-of-way, are we, are we able to pull up Google Earth here real quick? Do you mind?
One second.
If you could do a street view on the Calhoun right there? The widest area on the corner of Calhoun and Hickory is approximately 70 feet between the property boundary and the sidewalk. Right there in that corner, Michael, isn't there a big old drainage culver ditch right there? So in that area, in the widest area, there's a massive drainage ditch right there. And it's city right-of-way, as you continue going and it gets narrower and narrower. Can you do a little street view thingy? You know how to do that? Yeah, drop that guy in there. And then go the other way. There you go. It's right there. That's the little drainage ditch behind that, little poles right there. And then it gets narrower and narrower. So I guess we could pursue it, but it's a very small, limited space for sure. I would estimate, and Lisa or somebody else can maybe tell me if I'm right or wrong, but along Hickory Street, you probably have 25 to 30 parking spaces, actual parking spaces, 40 maybe, along Hickory Street. Where everybody else is parking is in the old T-ball field where we used to play back in the day, which is basically a dirt lot, which not really parking spaces. Where everybody else also parks is upon, on the right-of-way, just on Hickory Street. So I bet you with 70 spaces, you're going to probably have more spaces than are currently there, without a doubt. And I would say that everybody across the street on Calhoun, from the Meese to the Martlers to the Thompsons, I would imagine they are all going to be very grateful for that to be cleared up. The amount of people that this parking lot is serving, I would say during 365 days out of a year, you're going to have probably nearly half of those days, 120 to 150, be utilized for four to five hours a night with over 100 vehicles coming and going through those parking lots. Nearly half the year. 100 residents or more coming through those parking lots. So I don't think it services a very minor amount of people. I think it services over 100 potential residents every single night during the fall and the spring and summer. So I think we're trying to maybe get too far down the road of what are we going to do with it? I think option one right now is to buy the land before it's possibly listed, which it will be listed, and then it will be probably possibly sold to somebody else. It'll be on the marketplace. There's a tenant there right now, so if we buy it, what's next going to happen? I mean, I think that's up for the next steps, the city manager and them to decide what's going to happen and present us with those options. Can the tenant stay for six months, 12 months while we figure it out? Sure. Can we do the cheapest route for a parking lot, which is gravel? I mean, why not? I mean, if the engineer says it's possible, we should look into that. But to me, I believe we should act on purchasing the property and then we'll figure out about the next steps afterwards because it's going to go onto the marketplace and once it's there, we might miss out on this opportunity. And I think any time the city can acquire land that is abutting a current city-owned parcel is just too good to be, to pass up. Whether it's a parking lot now or a future expansion for playgrounds or whatever, there's a lot of opportunities in the next generations to come. So I would really urge us to support purchasing this parcel.
All right. Councilman Braden?
Thank you. Last couple of thoughts. Have the adjacent property owners been notified? Thank you. Last couple of thoughts. Have the adjacent property owners been notified? Potentially gonna be a parking lot built there, a lighted parking lot?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And I was not on the council, and it was voted to spend $9 million, I believe it was, on a piece of property down by the bridge, because of what might have happened, or what somebody was talking about building there. And I'm not fixing to spend $400,000 on a piece of property, because it might be listed. It's just bad business, but, I mean, maybe you want to go ahead and cut a check for that $400,000, go ahead and grab it, and then we'll figure it out later. But, anyway, there's just a lot of questions on it. And can we go back to that picture of, of we had up there, Google Earth, or have we gone from that? Because I was just curious, how much property we actually have there? That looks like people are parking just off the road, but there's, there's grass areas back there that's being mowed. I don't know if that's our land, or who's mowing it, or?
The property owner directly across from Thread Gill owns almost all the way in front of that. That's all his land right there.
That's all the city's land?
Nope, that's the property owner right there to the right. He owns all that in that grass area.
So, he's mowing that? Okay. Seems like that, that might be an easier task to see if he'd sell us that piece of property to, to put it right there. Because I'm like-
He was not interested the last time he was asked.
I'm sorry?
He was not interested in selling it last time he was asked.
I just don't know how we're gonna take that, I mean, the elevation of that piece of property that we're talking about is pretty significant. And I don't know how, I don't know how that's gonna work, as far as doing a gravel, lot on there, and if you pave it, or is that lot going to be flattened? All that dirt gonna be taken out of there, or a bunch of dirt being brought in there to level it? Can you expand on that?
Yeah, we would have to muck out the area and, and bring dirt and sand in the, to, to bring it up to grade.
That gets expensive. And there's, I mean, I know what you're talking about, Kevin, there's a, there's a drainage ditch right here, but when I was there today, it was an even larger drainage ditch between the ball field and that house, which, which I remember as kids, we wanted to come through there, but you never could, because it was just swamp. And, so I guess we'd build a wooden walkover bridge, I guess, would be the cheapest way, or if we could, if that's possible, doing that. I don't know.
Talking about walkover bridge to access the park?
Yeah, from the parking lot to the park.
Oh, or you could walk down Calhoun sidewalk as well.
So, that property comes all the way to Calhoun?
Mm-hmm.
Didn't know that. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Destin?
Thank you, Mayor. While I am supportive of trying to get parking, there are a lot of questions here that I'd answered, but I think we can get the answers. A little confused about the observation from Tori that we can't use pervious concrete, or pavers that are pervious? What, staff, is that correct?
Yeah, so I was told whenever I was building, that pervious concrete doesn't count towards the impermeable surface.
Well, I know a couple of projects we were building the last couple of years where in fact it did, so we need the answer to that question.
Yeah, could someone speak on that? Because I've gotten that same answer before, too.
Because if we've allowed it, then you people-
I'm, I'm not sure. I will find out. Permeable pavers do count towards-
We can, we can certainly get the answer to that, because I can point a couple of projects to you that were permitted by the city. So, if, if that's an option, then that helps our problem. We also have engineers on continuing contract rights, city manager. The way this works is, we get a drawing, we get a plan, and the city eventually has to approve it. And, you know, and I'm not sure what the price would be to try to get some kind of a plan from one of our contract engineers, and then we know exactly what we can do, and what it would cost. You know, without that information, it's, it's hard to just go off and spend this amount of money and not know. If this motion doesn't pass, I will make a motion to direct city manager to get that information for us.
Councilman Gallon?
All right. I do want to make it clear that I'm not, not supporting this motion. I just can't support it today until we have the full information that was prescribed previously in the motion. To me, this is only half the motion, and we need the other half the information before I can inform.
Councilman Schmidt?
Yeah, I'll just, I guess, wrap it up. Just a question for Lisa, if you don't mind. Do you, over the years, you've been with us, has there been a lot of, are there issues or complaints, or anything from Calhoun residents, or about the parking and cars? Is that, do we get any complaints about that, along, at nighttime?
I don't know that we get a lot of complaints. I don't think the sheriff approves of it too well. I mean, because they are, they have to park on the sidewalk.
Gotcha.
And so, you know, I think they're getting accustomed to it, but it's not okay.
Getting accustomed to the parking.
Yeah.
And then with the dirt and the sand that was mentioned, when the fields that are possibly gonna be dug out, from my understanding, the city's gonna possibly be taking that dirt, could that be utilized on this project?
Probably, most likely.
Okay. And then if we go under contract, I'm sure there's some type of like due diligence, or there's some type of, you know, claw, I mean, is there something that you are able to, if we're going under contract, are we still able to potentially get out of it, or what?
Well, depending on what council wants to do. If council wanted to go under contract, we could put in a, a due diligence period until these things are found out. Right now, there's an inspection period, but it wouldn't be long enough or appropriate for this. You'd, you'd need an amendment to what we have right now.
Is there, you know, Tori, obviously, you mentioned the unknowns of that one other item. Are there other things up here that y'all would want to get answers to with a due diligence time period? Like, what else is it that we need to get answers on if we put that into the motion? Is that something that y'all be wanting to do, to pursue, to get answers, or you got all the answers you need?
All right, anyone on that question? I know, yep, Councilwoman Trammell?
The other question we've talked about before was there was an encroachment. We had an encroachment. Does this, purchase of this property eliminate that encroachment? That would be my question.
Larry, Kim?
We have not reviewed the title yet, so have you, no. So, we would, so there's a period in the contract for title review, and that's when we would be looking at those issues. Again, if the issues aren't resolved to the satisfaction of council, you can, you know, get yourself out of the contract, if those are the concerns, if you want to contract.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else on Councilman Schmidt's?
Yeah, I would like to see the contract. I mean, seriously, we're gonna spend $400,000. I haven't seen the contract, I haven't seen the engineering report, I haven't seen anything. I mean, other than the item report that the city manager put in here. I mean, I don't think we-
There's not, right now, it's the Florida Bar Forum residential contract.
Okay.
That would not be, from what I'm hearing from this council tonight, I would change the contract to address these concerns, if you all choose to go under contract, is what I'm saying. So, currently, there is the Florida Bar Forum with a $400 purchase price and a 30-day closing. But, with the issues you all have, we would use a different contract. And usually, the city does not use the Florida Bar Forum.
Yeah, and I want, you know, how much is it, how much, not an estimate, not a guess, not a, I looked at it from the city engineer. How much did you say per parking spot? Because that's real easy to go ask any contractor in this city that builds parking lots. We've got numbers for when we were gonna build decks, exactly what it was gonna cost per parking spot to build those decks down either on Marler or the other places. And I'm just, it's not that I don't support this. I just think we're, you know, we don't have enough an, we don't have any answers. I, I would just disagree with you that we don't have enough answers, or that the staff has given us answers. No, the staff has given us estimates or guesses, and that is not good enough to, to go into a million-dollar endeavor, in my opinion.
Okay. With that-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just for clarification-
Please.
When Mr. Bagby was speaking earlier, I thought I heard him offer a substitute motion.
No, no, it was Destin threatening.
I thought about it.
Promising.
It was the same problem, is because we haven't asked about any grants. So, for me to say, you know, to direct them, I'm, I'm hoping that they're gonna do that anyway. So, I'm not doing a substitute.
Yeah. And then my only two cents on this is, while I'm very much in favor of the projects, I, I definitely, after hearing you guys, I definitely can see the need for due diligence and making sure that we do this correctly. The reason I was for it, one, I have a soft spot for Little League, but also, the idea that we have three parking ideas or projects on the table through the impact fee study. Two on, in the harbor, one over there in Crystal Beach. The ones in the harbor don't seem to have any legs in the near future. And we, we raise, Michael, how much money are we gonna raise this year, last year, for parking?
Our gross receipts for FY '25 are about $900,000.
So, where I was coming from, when I was talking to staff today, I was like, all right, we have three big projects, I think they're valid, there's not too much will for some of them. We're almost gonna take one year's worth of parking, and I know never, every year's not guaranteed, use it on a project. If we had parking projects lined up busting at the door, then perhaps we have to weigh out the, the priority list. But the idea that we're, we're kind of churning a parking project fund with no projects makes this very interesting to me. But then I also agree with you guys saying like, all right, maybe we need more information. But I really, at the end of the day, believe, yes, this is a very interesting project and parcel to bring into that park. So, is there any motion that would entertain all of us instead of just killing it?
Aren't we looking into the Firdapp grant for this project, and the-
That would be for the turf.
Not, not, this would not potentially go in wall with that?
Let me, let me make sure on that.
Yeah, we're working on the Firdapp grant for the artificial infields. I do know for that program, a facility, a parking facility like this would not be an eligible use. They, they like to build facilities, like, you know, the fields themselves, something, you know, along those lines, but something to support a facility probably wouldn't be eligible.
I appreciate the clarification. And then, if we always continue to look for grants, rather than using, for example, tourist money that's in our bank account that we're not using, that's, that's kind of, in my opinion, a issue over the years, that we have of not finishing projects, right? Sometimes we get really bogged down in searching for grants to finish projects, rather than just paying for it with funds. Is that, not, not trying to take a slide at you, but we, we don't finish projects because we don't have funding, right? But if we have funding with that tourist and others are paying into our bank account, why not use it to execute a contract?
I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
All right. So, I got a motion on the floor. Not hearing any substitutes at the moment, so we will call the vote for the current motion. Does everyone understand?
Yeah.
All right. All right, it dies 1-6. And is there any other motions on this topic? Councilman Destin?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to direct the city manager to contact one of our continuing contract engineers, and to ask them to bring back to us a plan to engineer the maximum amount of parking on that site. And I know that you have a, an amount that you can spend without coming back to the council. I wouldn't think they're gonna charge you, us, a whole lot, but see how that works out, and if, if it looks like it's more than that, then you'll have to come back for it.
I'll second that.
All right. With that, some of the other discussions, were Hickory and Calhoun? Would you want to add those to it, so we have a full matrix?
Might as well.
Yeah, and just do it all if it's under his authority?
And Ms. Kopp, I, I know that you can speak to the owner and tell him that we're on our way to spend some money to really find out if we can do anything. And if they don't think that that is reason to wait on us, then it's not an option, is it?
All right. All right, so I have that, second on everything. All right, any further discussion on the current motion? All right, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All right, eyes have it 5-2, so moved. All right, good stuff. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, counsel, and Mr. Mayor. Item 4E is just an update. At, at our last meeting, you approved us for a, a renewal of our property casualty insurance, which included our workers' comp, and that reflected a 5% increase, or a $28,000 increase. I'm happy to tell you that some hard work and due diligence by our HR staff, Ms. Jamie in particular, that we actually got a 8% reduction of that rate. So, that's gonna save us about $44,000 over last year's rate.
Did you say that was Jamie that did that?
I'm sorry?
You said Jamie did that?
I said Jamie did that.
Jamie, thank you.
So, we're, we're pleased with that, moving forward. Item 4F is just standing minutes for boards and committees.
Do we give Doji awards out?
I'm sorry?
Do we do Doji awards yet?
Well, we'll tell you that we are working on some things. And so, we'll, we'll have your report back sometime in the future.
Thank you, sir.
There's some things we're looking at. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Young?
All right. Mr. T, Dr. T?
Yes, we've got three, three events coming up. And the first is the Seafood Festival, and that'll be September 26th through 28th. And that, of course, kicks off the Destin Fishing Rodeo that extends the entire month of October. And then each year, as part of Florida City Week, we host a city open house. This year's open house will be Wednesday, October 22nd, starting at 11:30 a.m., and it's a chance for city staff to say thank you to all the citizens and community members. This year, we're having a Mardi Gras theme, and the lunch, the free lunch starts at 11:30 a.m. at the community center. And as always, we've invited our partners such as Okaloosa County Sheriff's Office, Waste Management, Destin Fire, Destin Water Users, The Chamber, and some others who will have tables represented. Also, we'll provide a shred truck that we do each year before the open house. The shred truck will be available at City Hall from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., and then again at the community center from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And the city's Christmas parade will be Saturday, December 13th at 10:00 a.m., and applications for those wanting to have a float in the parade are now available, and you can get those applications at the community center. And this year's theme is seashells and sleigh bells. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you for that. And with that, we'll get into the public hearings. Ms. Kopp?
Thank you, Mayor. The first ordinance is ordinance number 2520 CN. I will be reading it right now. An ordinance of the city of Destin of Okaloosa County, Florida, adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes for the city of Destin for fiscal year 2026, and providing for an effective date. This is second reading.
And with this being a public hearing, if anyone wishes to speak on the millage rate of ordinance 2520 CN, this is your time to do so. All right, we'll close the public comments for ordinance 2520, and I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Bagby?
Mayor, I move the council adopt ordinance 25-20- CN on second reading, adopting a proposed fiscal year 2026 millage rate of 1.6150 mils, which is more than the rollback rate of 1.5463 mils by 4.44%.
And second- I'll second that. I got Councilwoman Trammell on the digital board second, and she beat you to it. Awesome. Other than that, I know, overall, the millage is around 12 when you consider everyone, but I, I think it should be very, we should all be proud for not only this year, but the, the decades that we're at 1.1.615. It's one of the lowest in the state of Florida. We're in the top five lowest across the state of 411 cities. So, I know there's always gives and takes, but I appreciate you guys making sure that this is one of the things that we stand on. So, appreciate all, your guys' leadership on that. Seeing no other discussions, we'll call the vote. All right, eyes have it, so moved 6-1. Ms. Kopp?
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance 2521 CN, an ordinance of the city of Destin, making appropriations for certain expenditures, expenses, capital improvements, and certain indebtedness of the city of Destin, Florida, for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026, and providing for an effective date. This is second reading.
All right. And being that this is a public hearing at this time, if anyone wishes to speak on the adopted fiscal year 26 budget for the city of Destin, this is your time to do so. All right. All right, I'll close the public comments, and I have Councilwoman Bagby?
Mayor, I move the council adopt ordinance 25-21 CN on second reading, provide for a balanced budget for fiscal year 2026, and I do have some comments.
Second.
All right, and there she got her second. With that, anything else?
Yeah, I won't, I won't take it. Crystal wasn't able to make my pre-brief. She's back now, welcome back. I hope she had a great time in Washington. I will come by sometime this week. We may bring you back a small budget amendment- We may bring you back a small budget amendment to put money into council contingency, because there's about 10, but five real, five real issues that we probably need to look at. But I don't want to get into the whole hour-long explanation, so I'll just make the motion. We adopt this and-
Thank you.
We all appreciate that.
I know you do.
It starts with a 30-minute lecture.
Yeah.
All right.
Teresa, influence me.
Yeah, there you go. That's called teamwork. All right. The only other, seeing no other discussions, and just for the sake of your public comments is a little off-script, but this is the very end of this fiscal year's budget, which means starting tomorrow, we start next year. So we welcome the volunteerism, and thank you for being here. All right. With that, I'll call the vote. All right. Eyes have it, so moved 7-0. Last one, Ms. Kopp.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2505CC, an ordinance of the city of Destin, Florida, relating to livery vessels, amending Chapter 13, Article 8, registration of livery vessels of the city code of ordinances, amending provisions related to transferability of permits, providing for additional required training and safety measures, providing for findings of fact, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is second reading. There have been no changes to this ordinance since first reading.
Thank you for that. And being that this is a public hearing, at this time, if anyone wishes to speak on this topic, no, John's waving off. All right. Anyone else know about liveries? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments at this time, and I'll entertain a motion if we have one. All right. Councilwoman Trammell's looking. Line.
Turn your phone off.
That's the city attorney.
That's the city- It is not the city attorney. That is over there.
Better than crickets. Crickets would have been funny, too.
Duck call.
All right. No, you're good. She's looking through it. It's a big packet.
I move to adopt ordinance 25-05-CC on second reading.
Second.
All right. I have my motion, I have my second. Any further discussion? Oh, boy, we're actually going to get an ordinance. All right, we're going to call the vote. We got there. 7-0, so moved. All right. With that, for the sake of fun, I'm going to guess, reverse it. Councilman Schmidt, you got anything tonight? Oh, I don't know if it's part of the agenda. I don't know if that's legal, but you know, I figured we'd, we'd switch it up a bit.
You can do it.
Yeah, I figured, you know, it is what it is.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. I was not ready for that.
I know. That was the fun part. That's what I was hoping for.
I first wanted to commend Lisa and her staff that maintain and manage the Destin Elementary School football field. Me and many others, for a few months now, have been traveling to different cities and areas across the county for Pee-wee football. And I will not name the places we've been going, but this past weekend was Destin's first home game at Destin Elementary School. And when your seven-year-old child walks through the entrance and says, gosh, it's so good to be here, it is so much nicer than anywhere else we've been. And the amount of use between the high school and soccer clubs and everybody else that are using that field over there, I, I agree with my seven-year-old. The other places we have been to are not very nice, and they all have just done a very good job at being able to do what they're doing over there. So kudos to every single person that's putting time over there, so thank you.
Thank you.
And that's not a baseball field, so Kevin Schmidt said something about not baseball for anybody that's keeping a record here.
Ray, please reflect that in the minutes.
And, you know, I guess the only other thing I was going to say was I have tried to take a little bit different approach in my life on some things, and I am going to encourage myself and others to check out the scripture in the Bible from James, Chapter 1, verse 19. And that specifically says to be quick to listen and slow to speak and slow to get angry. And I am going to take that for my life on a daily basis, but also up here. I think it's very important, we are seven members of this body, of this city, to try to be doing things for the best of our city, and we might not always agree with each other. But I think if we can try to work together for the better good, I think that will go a very long way for everybody in this city, and I'm going to be the first to try to do better at that. And I look forward to hopefully two, three more years of being able to do that without having a heart attack. So thank you. That's it.
All right. Appreciate you. Councilman Guile?
Where I can appreciate that scripture, almost everybody and everything pisses me off, so it's going to be a lot of work for me, but I'll do my best. There's a couple things I'd like to, to bring up. One, I had under my name the harbor safety livery. I did investigate the 22, 2022 Senate Bill 606 a little bit more thoroughly. What I was going to propose is in direct conflict, so I'm going to pull that off. I'm not going to bring that up again. I do appreciate your patience with me, counsel, for giving me the time to research that before I did bring it up, but it would have been a waste of your time. Something else I'd like to bring up are the basketball courts at Buck Destin Park. I've had a couple people complain about the basketball courts and the condition of the basketball courts. I've talked to Lisa. There was a previous quote, I believe somewhere in the $200,000 range. Lisa found somebody that could do a better repair for $16,843, and that would be the same company that repaired the tennis courts there, which are in really good shape. And that would, that would be filling the cracks, leveling, recoating, and trying to refurbish that for only just under $17,000. So I'd like to make a motion that we invest $17,000 to refurbish that basketball court.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion and a second for that. Discussions, oh yeah, I know you guys, where's the money coming from? Go ahead, Councilman Destin.
No.
Button, please.
That would be my question. Where do we plan to take the money from?
Crystal?
You're not ready for a random left-field question?
Yeah, this was kind of random. I'm sorry she wasn't here earlier. If, if it'll make council approve this, I'll pay half out of my own pocket, just because-
We need it.
Yeah, we need it. What's that? I'm just getting tired of us not taking care of people.
Councilman Bagby?
Crystal, how much is left in council's 25, 24, 25 contingency fund? Because we repopulated it when, after we spent it within three weeks of the fiscal year starting.
Yeah, that, I have it almost at my fingertips. That'll just take a second here.
Hey, if there's not $17,000 in there, I want you to tell me exactly how much is left in the city manager's contingency fund, because I don't think we have spent, approved spending any money out of there this year.
Stealing from Larry's pockets.
Oh, heck, we got, we got two weeks left in this fiscal year.
Go ahead, Crystal. Yeah, so the remaining balance in FY 2025 contingency for council is $2,000, and the remaining amount in city managers is $541. On October 1st, we start fresh.
We, we repopulated the-
We're doing it.
Yeah, so when I come see you this week, I want to see where all those expenditures, because we also put some back in the city council contingency last year. So that's what, $6,000 we got so far?
Six of the 17.
All right. And then I would say with that, yes, Councilman Braden?
Thank you, Mayor. Was, is there no money set aside for, for facilities, repair, maintenance for Buck Destin?
The repair and maintenance accounts have been pretty, pretty much fully expended for this fiscal year.
And that, and Buck Destin was part of those? I mean-
Yes, Buck Destin is considered one of the parks.
What did we spend on Buck Destin? Do you know?
I don't have the specific for each individual park.
So, Councilman Bagby?
Yeah, I'm, I'm coming back at it, because in the document you gave us, you said there was 49, and this is a two-week-old document.
Oh, you're, you're right. You're right. I was reading the wrong column. Sorry. You've expended $2,000.
Thank you very much.
Our walking spreadsheet strikes again.
So we can, we can approve that Buck Destin spending then, right?
All right. Council, Larry?
Yes, ma'am, you're correct.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, the, the $16,843 price is an estimate with a caveat, this, a site visit is required to finalize the scope of work and pricing. So as opposed to tying it down to 17,000, we might need to bump it maybe to 18 or 20, just to make sure we're covered.
That's fine.
All right.
No more than 20.
All right. Do you want to amend?
Motion is no more than 20.
Out of the council contingency fund?
Out of the council contingency.
And I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All right. Seeing none, let's call the vote. Oh, Jim, I'm going to miss you when you're gone.
And then I've just got one last thing, and it's a question for Ray.
Ray.
Mr. Ray Bailey. I, I haven't seen the committee attendance sheet this recent time, but I believe on my last, the last time I reviewed it, my nominee missed three meetings during the Harbor CRA meeting. Is there any way I can, I can verify that? Because I think if he's not going to attend, we can possibly have him removed and put somebody on that, that wants to be active, that's sitting right here. So can I have you look into that and see if?
John, for the sake of, you know how this works.
She cried. You can't let somebody cry.
All right. John Stevens, Harbor CRA chairman. So the last meeting, Green, Jones, and Howard were not there. The one before that was Jones and Howard were not there. The one before that, everyone was there. The one before that was Jones, Howard was not there. One for that, Jones was not there. One for that, Jones was not there. So.
Casey Jones is mine.
Uh, Jones is-
So Casey Jones is my, my nominee.
That is correct.
Yeah. Well, I need to know the legal process to pull him. Well, then I, I need him to notify.
You're out.
Notify.
You're on notice.
Mr. Guile?
Yeah.
Unless he resigns, I believe you have to give her, him an opportunity to defend himself here.
Okay. Then I would like to present-
Since you appointed him in public, you have to do that in public as well to get rid of him.
Do I have to make a motion that he come here and defend himself for that role? Or how do we move forward on that?
Would you like me to contact him?
I would.
And let me know to attend the next meeting?
Please, Councilwoman Trammell, who's our trainer.
Yeah. What I've trained them is they can come up and, and defend themselves here in a public hearing, or the council member that nominated them can call them and ask them to resign.
Okay. I've, I've tried to reach out more than once, and I didn't get a call back. So I'll try to reach out again, but I would like them, whatever the process is, I'd like to move forward with this so that we can get somebody up there that actually cares.
Think you just need to put his name under the name of the meeting.
Yeah, I think, I think you just put Councilman Guile's appointment to that committee on his, on the agenda under his name for the next meeting. Period.
All right. That's great. Thank you all very much. I appreciate your support.
Awesome. Appreciate that. All right. Councilwoman Neber?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple questions. I know we put the camera up at Joe's Bayou. Sunday at 2:17, when my husband and I were getting our boat, I was back in the trailer and to pick it up, the, there was a little black Mercedes SUV gentleman with a little Georgia Seadoo, about ready to go ahead and launch it. And I said, excuse me, I noticed you didn't put any money in there. He goes, there's nobody working there. And I said, it's an honor box. To launch here, it's $25. And he goes, well, there's nobody here to take my money. I said, well, if you hold on a second, I'll park my truck and I'll take your money and put it in the box. And he said, oh, I'll do it. And so I want to know, is there a way to track on that camera people that don't pay? Are we able to do anything with verification of a license tag? It was a Florida tag on the vehicle. Is it just to monitor the illegal activities on the pier so we can send the sheriff down there?
You would have to have the license plate, if we could see the license plate, because for one, if you watch him and he doesn't go to the honor box, he could have a sticker so they don't have to put money in there.
Right.
But, you know, does, the camera wouldn't follow it around to see if it has, yeah.
Gotcha.
So it's, it's an honor box and-
But to the new parking cameras, that's where we're going, is where-
And then that'll be the way to get that.
Correct.
All right. Good, because I wanted to make sure that we're going to be able to push that system to where people like that don't just take off and do their thing.
That's exactly what that system will be very good at.
Terrific. And then I was asked by another voter, when exactly was the upgrades for Joe's Bayou, where are the new piers and all that? I know that there's a process. Can you put it on public record? What's going on with that grant? I don't know if Jeff needs to speak to it, or if it's a finalized, you can talk to it, Lisa or city manager. But I need it on the record. So the two residents sit, are asking why we spent money on the pier, the bridge property, when we have Joe's Bayou that desperately needs attention. And I said, it's being done. It's just a government, you know, loan or, I mean, one of those, a process that takes a while. So do you have any, any information on dates?
Well, the county is leading that effort. I know that right now they're finalizing the permitting, and they're at 60s. The next step then would be to go to 90s, and once those are complete, then to go ahead and let the job and bid it out. I'm not sure what the timeframe for that happening is. Hopefully sometime next year. I don't know that you'll see construction start next year, though. But, you know, we'd have to get more details from the county and DEP to, you know, get a better timeframe for you.
Okay. If you can put that under my name for the next meeting, can you get that information, find out from the county and the DEP if they have us on, like, what stage we're at with them on the approval and moving forward set?
I'd be glad to see if I can get an updated schedule from either DEP or the county.
That'd be great, Jeff. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And to tag along on that, do you remember when they approved 60%? I feel like it's been over a year we've been at 60. Do you have a rough estimate of where that 60 started? How long have we been sitting on 60?
I don't. It's been a while, but I know a large portion of that's been at the permitting stage. I know there's been a lot of requests for information that's had to been satisfied through DEP. It's kind of funny, DEP is doing the design and the permitting at that level, which has taken a while.
Yeah, to borrow some energy from Guile, Councilman Guile, we need to find a way to light a fire under Pierce's ass.
Yeah, so if you can get that, that's, that was the most important, is to, where is the process for Joe's Bayou's upgrade going to be and what, you know, what we're looking at, so.
I'll do my best.
All right, appreciate that. And that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Councilman Bagby.
Four quick things. We never answered the lady's question on Noriega Point because it, we covered it in the consent agenda, so could you please, one of you, update the great citizens of Destin on Noriega Point and when it will be accessible and everything?
So the park itself is about three weeks from turning it over to the city, and then we have the property owner that has, I think, aren't they saying maybe about 60 more days or so before they'll open up the parking lot?
Yeah, the city engineer actually just met with, it's on.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll come closer to it.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, so like Lisa said, Noriega Point was found substantially complete maybe a week ago. That means the 30-day punch list item time period starts, which, like she said, ends in about three weeks. Then we have the property next door, private property which has our public right-of-way on it, the parking and the road and the sidewalks. They also have to put in some landscaping and irrigation, and they have to do the final lift of the road, which is like another inch of asphalt, and they have to fix some things over there. That, they're saying, will probably be done. I don't, I hate to give you dates because then when construction things happen and it doesn't come to fruition, nobody's happy. But right now they are saying by November 15th. I would just say, to be safe, by the end of the year, definitely expect you to be able to open everything before spring break, but those things are in the works.
Okay, so I would hope for before Thanksgiving, but definitely before New Year's Eve and the fireworks, because, and then we need to have a plan, Sheriff, for parking and crowd management down there, because I think it will be totally out of control. Yeah. I want to thank Larry and Sherri. Tomorrow we will get our first dump of data from the Department of Revenue on short-term rentals, and who the owners are and what the addresses are, and hopefully our goal is by the next council meeting in November, I'm sorry, October, lost this month, October, we will have a, here's who we were missing, and we've also sent them letters, and then here's a couple that we had that they didn't have, but hopefully we'll have some analysis on how well we're doing. And they are still here. And ma'am, I, the mayor was absolutely right during public comment. It's your time to comment, not my time to question. I would just ask if you all, your condos are short-term rentals condos. They are, right? Because you wouldn't have gotten the card. I would reach out to my management company tomorrow, because they let you down. They should have kept you apprised, because this conversation's been going on for a year, a year. And having been a short-term rental manager and a couple of other jobs in that area, they, they let you down. They should have let you know that, hey, this is coming up, and, because we had short-term rental management companies here, and they came up, particularly in the beginning, and spoke passionately about, you know, we shouldn't do this, and then once they accepted that we, we could do it, they tried to limit the amount of what that charge would be. So that would be my only thing there. And then inspection reports. Okay, staff, where, we ready?
Yes, sir. I got an email from Noel on that. So there are three outstanding condos that have not provided that milestone phase-one report, two of which the email has been kicked back, and she has been working to try and find a contact for them. And the other one, she spoke with the engineer two weeks ago, and he's going to meet, he's going to get the report to her soon, so.
Okay, and we will then begin to understand if the corrections have been made, or they are under, ongoing?
I will...
Or is this just, which, which, is this just the...
This, this, this is just the milestone inspection?
Milestone inspection, okay. So we'll know if they had to have a number two?
Yes, that's correct. There have been 51 milestone phase reports sent in, to date.
Okay, so just to remind you all, we have a responsibility of oversight on the milestone inspections for condos over thirty, over 30 years old, based on the law that was passed a couple of years ago. And if we don't do that, then my, my fear is that we will have some liability when one of those buildings falls down. So, you know, 48 out of 51 is good, but we should have 51 out of 51. So if you send me those, or have her send me the names of those three condos, I may know the manager of them, so I'll reach out.
I'll forward the email to you right now.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate that. Councilman Destin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick questions, or requests. At the next meeting, I'd like to know how many of our business licenses we have been able to get the money for and what the percentage is. I don't know if any of you have had the joy of trying to work through that application. You know, I'm, I'm really surprised that we do not have the ability to pre-populate those licenses. Obviously, we don't. If everybody's being told you have to come in and apply like you never had a license, which is the best I can tell. But anyway, I'd like to report on how we're doing, whether we're collecting them, how many, at the next meeting. And my other question is, other question has to do with, with the committees. I understand our advisory committees communicate with us by making motions and sending us what they think by motion. I want to make sure that we're getting all the motions that they make and that none are falling through the cracks somewhere. So staff, if, city manager, if you would check on that and make sure that we're getting what our advisory committees are sending us. That'll, that covers it for me.
And then with that, Councilman Guile had a discussion point on the BTRs, I believe?
Yeah, well, on that topic, it was just brought up, if you don't mind. So I've talked to a couple of CAMs in Destin. They've notified me. They've been notified of this. I'm actually doing an engineering review on a roof system for a while. They were aware, and they've notified all of their tenants effectively. They said that they've already received notifications. Their tenants have already started to receive notifications for the City of Destin, and they have no issues with it. They seem to think it's reasonable. So I do know that it's moving forward.
All right, thank you for that. Right, Councilwoman Trammell?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm interested in your comment about whether we're getting the motions or not, because I think we are. The e-bike thing that's happening October the 1st, the, the big workshop, can any citizen attend that? Or is it just for cities and officers and...
It's open to the public.
Okay, then I'm going to make a recommendation that the liaisons for the town center and the Public Works and Safety Committee get with them, immediately shoot them out an email or something about this meeting that's happening, because both of them have made motions and discussion, had discussion about e-bikes. So I think they have, need to have the opportunity to hear what everybody else is going through as well.
Mr. Wood is aware, and is, he can't attend because he's going to be out of town, but I believe we're setting up a virtual option for him to be able to attend that way.
Okay, and none of the other committee members want to attend?
I'm not familiar with the other committee members. I've just had correspondence back and forth with Mr. Wood about it.
Well, it was just mentioned on the town center minutes that just came to us this, this time. I just wanted to make sure that they were aware of it, and they had the opportunity to be there if they wanted to be. Second thing I have tonight is an experience I had this week with Destin High School's fishing class and the county's partnership in building reefs at, in the Gulf here. If you've seen my Facebook page, you'll see that we did a memorial reef for my husband, and I just want to thank the Alex Fogg from the county. He spearheaded all of this. It's about $3,500 to put one of those down. If you want to make a memorial, you pay $1,000, and the county comes up with the rest. This, Destin High School has a group of people led by Mike Parker, and he did fundraisers for many of the fishermen that also had reefs out there. It's a captain's reef. Anyone can be there. There was a couple from Ohio that did one in memory of their son, and it was very unique. It was full of skateboards and BB guns and antlers, deer antlers. I thought that was very unique. But it is a project that I think Destin can be proud of. Oak Alusa County started this. It is going to benefit Destin. It's in 60 feet of water, so it's good for diving or for recreational fishing. So I'd like us to make sure that if we get the opportunity to voice our support for this, anywhere we get the opportunity. And thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Amazing, thank you. Councilman Braden?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I guess just a little more clarification on our, where we've come with the presentations. I know when we, in the past, we've had, people had come and do a presentation, it was on the agenda, and now it seems like that under city manager's boards, like we had tonight, there was somebody come up, did a presentation, but it wasn't on the agenda. Council members having somebody come up to the podium and do a 30, 45-minute, hour-long presentation, and it's, it's not on the agenda anywhere. So I didn't know when we changed that, or if that's our, if I was gone for two years, if that's when it happened. Or, because I know if, you know, if I have, and Bagby has, and Tori has, whoever, we all have somebody sitting in our, it's going to come up to an hour-long presentation, and it's not anywhere on the agenda, and then the city manager has a couple people wants to do presentations. We'll be here until midnight. So if it's, is there any way we can just kind of put something on there that, on our agenda now that, I guess since we've changed that process, that, you know, so-and-so is going to be here to do a presentation under this item and that item, and council member has somebody coming that's going to do a presentation? I brought it up at our agenda briefing, but I didn't know if somebody else had any more information on that, or if that's just the way we're doing things now, or...
Sure, I don't know. Councilman?
I agree. I think that what's important is, is when we have someone that comes up to do a speak, not only put it on our agenda that they're coming, but that they've been told they have a 10-minute limit. Because if we don't give people a limit, they'll talk for 30 minutes, and it'll be like, "I'm going to tell you what I'm going to tell you, then I'm going to tell you, and then I'm going to tell you what I told you." So be brief, be informed, and be done. So I don't know if we need to make a motion to get it back on there, but anyone that's got a presentation that's going to be more than about a minute needs to be on there, and they need to be told no longer than 10 minutes if they justify a 10-minute presentation. Is that about what you're looking for?
Yeah.
We're starting to do a better job of it from our end when we're...
We used to have what we call a speaker's forum, where individuals would request to speak, and we, they're allowed five minutes. And then on that speaker forum, they put down what their, their intention was for the council to, you know, consider. And they're allowed five minutes, but that was taken off several years ago when they amended their resolution. So you want...
Remember we had something like that, because we want to know kind of what they was going to, their presentation, or you had to submit something?
Right. They give you information, what they want to talk about, what they expect you to consider. Sometimes you can make a motion to approve it or not make any decision at all, so it's up to you. Do you want, do you want that back on you?
Well, the council, the council's in charge of setting its own procedures, right? You all actually have a procedures resolution. My suggestion would be, why don't we circulate it to you via email after the meeting? You guys can look at it in your, you know, spare time, not that you have spare time. And then when we come back to the next meeting, if you all want to recommend certain changes or talk to the city manager and I about changes before then, we can bring it back. That way you have time to see what it says, and we can address the presentations however you all want. If we want to put something in there that says nobody makes a presentation, that's not on the agenda, we can.
Okay, thanks. And I guess there was some rumors going around that Little League only can use the ball field for seven months out of the year. Is that, is that true? Can anybody elaborate on that? Maybe Lisa?
No, that is not true. We've always worked with Little League and whether, and now we have it in the contract, but even prior to the contract, they start January 1, they go through their season and their All-Star season, which ends up to be, you know, end of July, 1st of August, and the last few years, and this year, they are doing fall ball, so they're on that. And I think Councilman Schmidt will say that that's the way it is, and we've been just fine with that.
So they, more or less, more, they can use it 12 months out of the year?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Just want to say, y'all know that the medians in 98 is always, I've had a passion for those, making them look nice, because that's our, that's our front door to our city with the 70% of the traffic that comes through Destin that doesn't originate here, terminate here. They still see our front door and see what Destin looks like. Just want to say thanks to Michael and his staff to, for staying on those and keeping them nice, and it looked, it used to be stickers. That's all we had for years and years and years, back in the 80s and 90s. It was just nothing but stickers. But anyway, that, they look great. Thank you for that. Kevin, I like the, the James, chapter one, verse 19, was that it? I'm going to read that. I need it. Because I, it's funny you brought that up, because I left my agenda briefing with the staff, told them that stars cannot shine without darkness. I kind of left them in a whirlwind, and I left. But yeah, it's funny you brought that up, because I made that, I made that comment to the staff, too. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Cott.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, as you know, we had an executive session that was scheduled for tonight, and there was an accident involving someone that was legally required to be there, our court reporter. So we are going to reschedule it, if it's okay with you, to October 6th at 5:30 PM. And I will just read the statutorily required script very quickly. Pursuant to section 286.011 subsection 8 Florida statutes, I desire the advice of the city council in the case of City of Destin versus Kyle M. Coleman, doing business as Kyle Coleman Ice Cream, AKA Gulfstream Ice Cream, Ohana Gelatos LLC, and Wounded Warrior Com... Tell me the word again, Teresa. Commissary. Case number 2025 CA 002412A 0010F in the Circuit Court of Oak Alusa County, Florida, and as such is calling for an executive session to be held in the city council chambers at the Destin City Hall Annex 4100 Indian Bayou Trail, Destin, Florida 32541, on October 6th, 2025, at 5:30 PM Central, or as soon thereafter, as the issue may be heard. Present at the executive session will be a court reporter, the mayor, all council members, myself, the city manager, and litigation counsel, William Warner. And that's all. Thank you.
My only note is I'm going to not be there, and I guess under my name. I'm going to be gone the next seven weeks, starting at the end of September, so I'll be missing the two Octobers and the first November meeting. I'm literally leaving after our last meeting in September, and I'm making sure to get back to Sunday before our second meeting in November, to try to reduce as much as possible. Where? Up in Massachusetts and Virginia, I have work, and while I'm up there, we're going to take a much-needed honeymoon. So we're going to get it while it's slow season. So, yep, just wanted to let you guys know. I won't be on that or many other things for a while.
I like that "much-needed" part.
Yeah, "much-needed," yeah. Yep. All right. Shut up, Kevin. He's whispering over there, all in good fun. All right, with that, public comments? Anything else? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comments, and this meeting is adjourned. And Ray, Ray Vegas here said 7:45. So what is the house? Does the house win? Do we tie with the house? How does that work? Ray is "house," the Vegas.